And welcome to the February 26th council meeting in 2015. I'm showing at 7:35 PM. Mrs. R.C.C., would you please call the roll?
Ms. Darrow?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Ms. Hanekin?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
And Ms. Telly?
Here.
I would like to ask everyone to stand and remove their hats. As council president, Rita Darrow is going to be two-timing this evening with both the pledge of allegiance and our prayer.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dad, we want to thank you for another day, another chance to do your will. We thank you for the opportunity to come together and unite in purpose. We ask that you guide us this evening for your wisdom to know what is best for us. May we honor you. Amen.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I ask that we hold the minutes. I've got to, I haven't been able to review, I reviewed them and I have some questions, so I wanted to talk to Josephine about them. So I would ask that the council, if we can hold these, please, at this time. I've just been other places all week, so I haven't had a chance to watch the meeting. And that's all I ask.
All right, is there only one set of minutes, Josephine?
Yes, sir, there is.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to, before we get into the rest of the meeting, we've got a special guest here this evening. I would like to ask our police dog Harold to come forward, along with the guy with him who happens to be Officer Sean Hathaway. This is our police dog, folks. Come on, Harold.
Josephine, your dog.
Yeah, I was going to say, really? I wear peltuely, that's not good.
How you doing, Sean?
He's doing his job.
Good.
He's doing his job.
He's a little sick right now, though, so we're going to be brief.
Oh.
Okay, he's got that ween.
Yeah, I just don't want him to have any accidents up here.
Oh, yeah. We don't.
The kids love him at the high school.
How old is he?
He's seventeen months.
Okay.
What is that little green light on his collar that keeps flash?
This is e-collar, just for training.
Is it an electrical collar?
Yes.
What do you mean by e-collar?
Yep. So, he's trained in patrol and narcotics.
It's correct.
He's got bigger ears.
What is he trained in?
Building searches, tracking, things of that nature.
Harold is spelled H-A-R-O.
Well, you better take him over on that side.
Well, at least I know him, please.
All right, Jimmy, does that dog know you? Is that why? Yeah?
You smell something over there.
Besides the traditional way people think of with drugs and that, does he also help if we had a lost child or we had someone who is, he could track people? I'm really glad to see him.
Well, thank you for bringing him in.
Thank you.
That was nice.
Enjoy him.
Thank you.
He lives with you, right?
He does, yes.
People need to understand these dogs are bound with their owner and they basically live with you, sleep with you, and if you see them out there working, you're not to approach them. They're working.
Make sure he gets on the camera so people will donate.
I'll walk up in front.
Has he, has he been able to find any drug shed or anything?
Um, well, marijuana so far.
Oh, okay.
Bye-bye.
So he's doing his job.
He's doing his job. We have to wipe out for Josephine.
I was a nervous wreck. I don't, I'm not real comfortable. I'm not very comfortable.
All right, that was fun. We got a chance to meet one of our canine watchdogs. And now we're going to go into, we need acceptance for the financial report.
Yeah, acceptance.
Right. Mr. Mayor, I move that we acknowledge the receipt of the financial report dated January 31, 2015.
Second, I'm sorry, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, the next part of our meeting is comments by the public. If you would like to speak, we ask for you to sign in. We have a couple of speakers tonight. Try and hold it to five minutes. And first is going to be Tori Blackburn. Tori, if you could come up to the front, state your address, please.
My name's Tori Blackburn. I live at 1258 Mid Court in Macedonia. My family's operated out of the city of Macedonia since 1983. We started with one employee, my dad. Currently, we have forty-six employees. We have a $2.2 million payroll. We've occupied, this is our third facility in Macedonia. We've never asked the city for any concessions. We've tried to, A, look out for the best interest of the Blackburnes. I don't put any, you know, we're looking out for our family, but we also are looking out for the best interest of the city, too. In the past, our moves have facilitated allowing standard signs, Hitachi, Bennett Supply, occupying the Roland Hole facility, which was a abandoned facility for, you know, three years before we, before we moved into that. We have the opportunity and we've applied for a mop grant through the city. We were under the understanding that it was a million-dollar payroll requirement. We currently, in 2013, we were at 2.2 million. My employees are not minimum wage employees. So when you talk about adding ten employees to there, that's a substantial amount for us. So we realized we were a little shy possibly for one of the requirements there, as it was pointed out to us. But we also felt that we doubled one of the requirements. We have the opportunity to vacate the facility we're in. My brother and I currently own that facility. We've been approached by a couple publicly-held international companies about leasing our facility. Our facility is a heavy-duty industrial facility. It was produced, it was built for the Roland Hole Steel Company. We are not utilizing one-tenth of the resources of that facility and it's just plain wasteful, truthfully. We had the opportunity to enter in a contract of another facility here in Macedonia. We also had the opportunity to, you know, leave the city of Macedonia, too. I'm a lifetime resident. I was born here in Macedonia. I want to stay in Macedonia. Logistically, for my business and my employees, staying in Macedonia works best. But I also have other cities providing all types of benefits and extending their hand out saying, please, bring your forty-six employees along with your couple million dollars worth of payroll and these are things we'll do for you. By us vacating the Roland Hole facility and moving under a half a mile away, we're able to alleviate what has been identified as a potential eyesore of the city. I know many council members have had calls about the potential facility that we're moving into. We are going to clean it up, we're going to paint it up, we're going to operate our facility out of there, and then I'm going to entertain one of these large companies. I haven't even marketed our facility yet and we've already entertained two companies. I've had a second viewing by a German international company that wants to set up a steel facility in Ohio, working with NEO, the Northeastern Development Group. They want to be within a half an hour of the port. We have opportunities here for us to move and set Blackburnes into a lighter-duty facility and in turn keep on the same growth pattern that we are. But when you tell me I have to add, you know, ten employees to make that happen, that's a hard thing for us to do. Whereas if I take this out of the city of Macedonia, I'm you to them, so they're more than willing to say, please, please bring that. That's not what we want to do. If we open up and we create a vacancy here in the Roland Hole facility, before I move, I will have that leased. And this company, you have a potential from anywhere from ten to a hundred employees. The two companies that we're courting right now, one has already said, we want to buy the whole facility, because they want to be here long-term. They said, well, if you won't sell us the facility, then we need a long-term lease. And in turn, you know, we were up for a long-term lease because we want businesses like that to stay in Macedonia. We don't want them to come in and get tax breaks and whatever, like some of our other businesses that we've had and that I've seen over the years, they got their tax breaks and the minute their tax breaks are up, they move to another city. We, as Blackburnes, get somebody in to sign a long-term lease, they're utilizing the facility the way it is. So I'm asking you guys to take a close look at, I understand the law is the law, but I'm asking you to take a close look at it because there are opportunities to bring other businesses here, which is what, you know, we all want to do, is to bring other businesses and quality businesses that are going to bring quality people here, that are going to relocate people here, you know, from, possibly internationally, to bring other people here to live in our city. So that's where we're at. I mean, I'd love to address any questions you guys might have, if that's possible.
So you've had an offer from some others?
We have. We are supposedly going to have a proposed lease back from one company. We're not quite sure if we like the terms of it or not, but we have a first showing tomorrow from a company on the East Coast who has wanted to purchase the facility. Industrial facilities are extremely hot right now. There are, in a fifty-mile radius of our area here, there are very few industrial facilities and from what we understand, none as clean or as nice as our facility. So needless to say, we haven't even marketed it yet. It was word of mouth and all of a sudden we had multiple people with their hands up saying, when can we get in there and see this facility again? So.
You were given incentives by another community, another municipality?
Right.
They wanted you there.
Right. We have one building that we located Independence and we went through the preliminary process with them and they laid out a couple different options for us. And it has to make dollars and cents. Once again, our hearts here in Macedonia, we want to be here in Macedonia. You know, I've got four kids here in the city and that, I want to be here and that. But, and I go where my business goes, so do I have to leave? You know, I don't want to do that. So that's why we're here and we're talking about this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next down on our list is Roy Metzl. Roy?
Hi, I'm Roy Metzl, I live on Smoke Rice Drive in Macedonia. I just want to talk about some conditions in the city, with the city council. I mean, this is embarrassing. When I see all these lawsuits and all this stuff going on and hiring all these people and all this, you know, you're supposed to be up here supporting the people and working together and it seems like nobody's working together, you know? And it's really bad. I mean, I've been here for thirty-five years and, you know, I never saw it like this before. And I wish there was some way everybody could reach a common ground and do what you have to do to support the people of Macedonia. You see, we don't have a lot of people here. Unless you take their garbage collection or set their house on fire, they're not going to be here. It's just the way it is. I mean, in other cities where I live, it was the same way. You know what I mean? As long as nobody's knocking on your door, they don't bother, you know? They took your order. Everything must be okay. I wish I could get more people to the meetings and see what goes on. I mean, it just seems like there's all, you know, everybody's trying to take everybody else's job and do their responsibilities and I don't see that division, you know, just like in a Congress and a president, you know, somebody's trying to do everybody else's job. And I think you need to all work together somehow. I mean, maybe it's not easy and everybody's got their own little agenda, but, you know, somehow you've got to do it because you look silly every time I look at the newspaper, you know? And pretty soon, nobody's going to want to move here. In fact, I'm thinking about moving out, you know? I mean, it's ridiculous. I mean, come on. This is a nice community, that's why I've been here for thirty-five years. And I'd like to see it stay that way. And I don't know, you know, what we're going to do and what the answer is, but, you know, we're getting too much press and it's bad press, you know? When I read that local paper and then I look on a TV and I see people getting up and, you know, Don, I tell you, I couldn't have that job that you have. And that's probably the reason I didn't get into politics and I could have got into politics years ago, because I'd be flipping out of a chair, you know? I mean, there's too much turmoil going on here all the time. And I don't know how you do it, but I'm glad you're there. Now I'm out here. So that's just, just my comment, just my feelings, you know? And I see too much negative stuff going on and this and that one and, you know, it's like, okay, what are we going to do? Take care of the people over here, you know? I know we've got the roads thing and, you know, so we've got to get on a program and do all this kind of stuff starting this year and show the people that we care. Do them roads and start doing stuff for these people, you know? I mean, they came with dirt. I remember, they came to this council meeting bringing pieces of their road. Here's my road, here's dirt, you know? Well, they still got dirt, you know? See, I go, you've got a piece of it there. So, you know, we've got to start doing some of this stuff. I mean, there's a lot of areas around the city that need a lot of work. And I know they want to hire somebody in the service department and they, because me, I'd give you ten people, you know? I mean, really, you could really clean this city up and really make it look nice. That's my comment, that's it.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, we're going to move into pending in our new legislation, starting with ordinance number eight dash 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number eight, 2015, for a third reading by title only.
An ordinance, amended codified ordinance five forty-nine ten, possession and discharge of firearms.
And what's your pleasure, and maybe Dave, you want to explain this a little bit?
Do we second it because it's third reading?
No.
No, you don't need it. It's third reading, it's straight.
Okay.
It's a straight, it's only when...
Dave?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is a disordinance. There's been some discussion, it doesn't limit the possession of firearms because possession of firearms, possession is part of the title. It doesn't do anything with regard to possession. It deals only with the discharge of firearms. Probably five or six years ago, it was illegal in the city of Macedonia to discharge firearms unless, of course, it's a policeman and his lawful duty, unless it's a military action within the lawful confines, the Constitution and things like that. And it's always been a safety issue as to houses are close together. And there were some people who thought, well, if you have five acres, you could make it a berm and make it safe to discharge firearms. And that was passed. And at that time, I believe, I'm not speaking for you, I think you were opposed to it, John.
Yes.
And I was opposed to it because I understand the berm will protect you, but only if you hit the berm. And if you shoot over the berm, God knows how far these guns can go. And nobody has applied for a permit. And I felt that because no one has applied for a permit, the police chief has always maintained that he would, he does not think the discharge of firearms within the city of Macedonia is safe. And I agree. We're repealing that act, or that's what I'm asking the council to do tonight. It does not have anything with, to do with possession of firearms. If you have a hundred, two hundred, I don't care how many firearms you have in your house, God bless you, just don't shoot anybody with them. And that's all it is. And so that's what we're asking to vote on tonight. Before we vote, I'm going to make a motion to amend the title. I have discussed that with the police chief and he is happy with the amendment. I have discussed that with the law department, who is happy with the amendment. And so we're going to change it to the title, which is actually part of the exhibit, to, I'm going to amend it to regulation, regulating discharge of firearms. Is that okay, Chief?
Absolutely.
Law department? So I'd make that motion if I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Dave, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance eight, 2015, according to law.
Second.
As amended, I'm sorry.
Vote call.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
No.
And Ms. Telly?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to ordinance number twenty-four, 2015.
I'd like to offer ordinance twenty-four, 2015, for its first, I'm sorry, second reading by title only.
An ordinance appropriating the funds to add a full-time maintenance worker in the service department of the city of Macedonia.
All right, moving on to ordinance number twenty-eight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number, is it twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight.
For its first reading by title only.
You have to say 2015.
Yeah, twenty-eight, 2015, excuse me.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a Macedonia occupancy program agreement with Blackburnes Hubcaps and Wheel, Wheel Inc.
Are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening? Hearing none. Is there any correspondence to the clerk?
I have nothing with me, Your Honor.
Moving on to the mayor's report, the future growth committee has been selected and will be meeting soon. Personally, I think this committee is very important to giving elected officials an agreed-upon vision of the future that's created by the residents. To me, it definitely was not a waste of time in the original future growth committee in 1997 and then again in 2002. The addendum passed by council on October 10, 2002 was very much a roadmap for me, as I was elected in November of 2003. The 2002 Future Growth Committee met nine times, agreed upon the issues within the addendum. At that time, in the plan that resulted, six priorities were listed. Number one, on that list of priorities, and it just goes to show you how long this has been going on, was to prepare a thorough, fair plan. The paragraph describing this priority said, "We recommend adopting a comprehensive thoroughfare plan so that we can better understand the impact of growth and the related increase in traffic in the city of Macedonia. Specific areas that should be addressed include the Route Eight Corridor, the Route Eighty-two Railroad Bridge, the Crossing/Golden Link Project, and the I-271 northbound on-ramp." If the new Future Growth Committee comes up with a new perspective of how we can continue to improve on the success of the past plans, and if it results in as much success as this plan did, Macedonia will become the Mecca people want it to be. This plan must continue to stress economic growth in a balanced format that will result in the strengthening of the tax base of our city so we can provide the services that homeowners need. That, too, was one of the six priorities of the 2002 addendum. The new committee will include homeowners, business owners, my staff, whomever it is deemed necessary. And of course, first, it'll start with input from our city planner, Brian France. He's a qualified licensed professional that will provide this input for them. The police may be advising him at times because in the past, traffic, traffic, traffic will always be an issue. Building and engineering, along with the service department, can give valuable input to this community. Zoning is another burden on the city. It always has been. We still need to try and slowly blend our zoning to create functional transition. Let me try and explain that a little bit. It's going on right now across the street from City Hall on Valley View. Valley View starts off as a business, right there by eighty-two. Then as you start moving south, it changes into business office, B.O., which is a very inclusive zoning. Right now, there's homes there. There could be offices there. Those people have the right to decide whether they want to stay living there, will their house to their kids, sell the house to a business. They have a lot, a lot of options. And then a little bit further south, it goes into light industrial. So this is a blending of zoning so that you don't have what we have right now. If you think about it, if they would have had this foresight previously, we would not have residential and industrial zones within feet of each other. It's no fun having what some others do in our city today going on. The woods you look out at from your window can turn into buildings. And those buildings could emit noise or bustle with all kinds of activity. Nobody wants to live with that, yet we can't exist without it. It provides income that keeps your city's operating real estate taxes down. But we sure could have been zoned with a little more forethought as to what happens when you have a plant right across the street or in a home's backyard. For the people who volunteered their time to be on this committee, those of you selected should take this venture very seriously. Plan our future, plan it well. Thank you for taking time away from your life to make all of ours better. Your efforts might not happen tomorrow or next week, or maybe not even next year, but someday. There's proof, right now, that your vision will be taken into consideration and even possibly implemented to improve our city. And that end my report for tonight, so we're going to move right into committee reports.
Mr. Mayor, the planning commission will meet on Monday, March 16, at 5:30. And the charter review commission will meet March 18, at 6:30.
Very good.
The first meeting is March 11.
Oh.
On the second and third.
Oh, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. I apologize. Yeah, in March, but the charter review is meeting twice and the first time is March 11 and then March 18. Thank you, Josephine. Both are at 6:30.
Thanks, Dave. Is there any other committee reports?
I'll only, excuse me, I'll only correct Mr. Engel one more time. The planning is at 5:30, so if anyone comes at 6:30, the meeting might still be going on, but it starts, planning starts at 5:30, Mr. Engel.
You promised me you're only going to correct me once for the rest of my life.
We just, planning, you'll get the hang of that. It's at 5:30.
Yeah, the other one's at 6:30.
All right, any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to department reports, starting with you, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, council, just to let everybody know, the salt orders have come in and both of our facilities at 9000 Valley View and 948 Twinsburg Road are at full capacity. For a while there, we weren't getting our salt orders really on time or when we ordered because most of them were going to Odette. And we got an eight-million-dollar customer, I guess they get priority service. But at any time, we were never in danger of not having salt to do at least what we always do first anyway, our mains, our side streets, our hills, our curves, side streets or residential, I mean, secondaries. Our side streets and residential, we plowed and did the intersections. And that's basically, we were following the sensible salt. So we were never in trouble. Plus, we have our neighbors who are always good to us if we didn't need it, but we didn't. And so the salt situation is good now. And we should be ready for the next storm that's coming Sunday. So then I also want to talk about what happened this last Saturday. We actually did, I think, really good considering the storm and it was even warned by some colleagues were sending out warnings. And only had a couple people that actually called, too. One was a senior who called and stated that she feared coming home from seeing her husband at the daycare center he's at. It was just where she lives, at the top of Ledgero Hill. And her message, which I am going to send to council and plus the other one, she just stated how terrible it was the whole way until she got to Macedonia. And Ledgero Hill was black. And she was very happy about that, because living at the top of the hill can be pretty treacherous. So that was one. Then there was another woman who called and during that major storm said we never entered her, her street and actually dropped the F-bomb on us a little bit. She wasn't very nice. very nice. And I want to remind everybody, this is a list. This is GPS. I have it on every single salt truck. It works two ways. If my men aren't doing their job, or speeding, or whatever, I know it, and I can tell it, and I do tell it, and anybody that knows me knows. I will make my point. For the woman who called and said we never went to Lancewood on Saturday, worst day, four times we were there, and it's on this GPS. So, we do go to every street. We make it a point to do the main things that we have to do to keep it safe, and then we always will go to the side street. If we can't salt it, we're going to plow it, but we always do. And it's right here. And I always will have this proof. And again, if my men are speeding, I'll know. If they're not, I'll let you know that, too. But I just wanted everybody to know that, just for as bad as it was when we had two calls. One was a good one, and one was from that particular woman. Besides all that, to date, we've spent, let me see, I lost it, right here. To date, we spent $177,536 on salt, and that includes both our salt and their at full capacity. So, we're still pretty, you know, that's not bad. And if I do the minimum, minimum order, we'll spend close to $275. If I take everything they have, it'll be more like $335. But we'll see how it goes and how it looks everything. But I am required to buy the minimum of $49.50, which would be $275,000. Okay? Co-patching, we're getting it every day. That we can co-patch , we got it. And again, staying with all the big holes, the major ones. 82 will be hitting tomorrow, because there's some major holes on 82, especially by the off-ramp by 270. So, we will take care of that. There are some streets, like I said, are beyond. We patch them, but they're beyond co-patching. Today, Nick has given me what it will cost us to do that section of Highland Road between South Bedford, and it's actually capital. It's not all the way to Route 8. It's just, it's prior to that.
Let me, let me just say something. I did speak to Summit County Engineers Office on this, and I was told that the permissible license tax fee would have about $100,000 by July. That's where we, we can use that on that particular funding on those roads. Do we know Ballpark?
Yeah, Ballpark. Nick checked it out, and it's about $130,000 for that.
Okay, so, that would, basically, we would be able to pay for most of that through the license.
And it's something I think we need to do. Everyone knows that section.
We've had a lot of complaints because that's like a battlefield.
Right. And we can't do any more to it. Co-patching just doesn't work.
Well, yeah, it looks like it.
And some of the other areas, I'm going to try to work on, and we're also going to look at what it might cost us to do also the cons. Okay? And that's my report. We're going to try to keep things going here.
Jim, could you please let everybody know that you're going to be posting, as of tomorrow, that you're accepting applications?
Yes. There will be a posting at all our buildings, which is required, and then we're going to put an ad in the, it could be any paper, so we're just going to put in a small ad. It'll be, and that'll go in, and then hopefully, within a few days, then we have enough people that we will start interviewing, and I'm hoping within two weeks to have, you know, things moving along.
Which paper do you have it put in?
We're going to put it in the, I just went blank.
Plain Dealer?
No, not the Plain Dealer. Yeah, Akron Beacon Journal.
Okay, the Akron Beacon Journal. Okay.
Let me ask one other question, Jim. You mentioned that we have enough money for another push for the senior snowplow program.
Yes, we do.
But do, you were going to find out exactly what we might need?
Yeah, I, you know, I, it's, you know how March can be, and we've had snow all the way into April. Right now, we have enough, because remember, I talked to you today, and I told you we don't have access to that account. And we did find out that we have enough for one more push, which we'll probably use Sunday. So...
My concern is, do we need to add more money tonight?
Oh, yes, we do.
Well, then, what is the amount of money?
I would say just, you know, put in enough for another six to eight pushes.
Well, how much is that?
Times 12 50, I mean, you're looking at 1175 a push. Sorry, 1175.
No, it's 12.
Wait a minute, let me see.
It's 1250. It's 1250?
1250 at 95 driveways.
So, 100 times that, just round it up. That's why I would just do it.
I have my calculator.
Just got their calculators out.
12, yeah, about 13.
1300 rounded up, Jim. So, that'd be about $8,000, $9,000 for sure, or more.
If you're talking 10 more pushes.
It's 1187 50 a push, every time you go out.
It's 1250 a push.
Times at least eight, eight more times.
Who's got 100 people?
You're looking at 9500, put 10,000 in there.
Yes, well, it does sound like it if we have to do that, and do we need a motion to do that, or? We got passed the motion here.
You, excuse me, if I could just say, last, the last one, you did put the $6,000 into that fund by motion? You did do that. So, all you need to do is do that. Do you have a copy of the minutes? Because that'll, does anybody have a hard copy? Because the fund that you put the money in is right there.
I do have the minutes here.
Look at the, look at the motion from the last, for the six grand.
Well, how about if we do that under motions and other legislative actions?
Well, we already have it.
So, I just wanted to see if we can go back and do that.
You can do it under new business.
Or under new business. But the fund number is in there, Ms. Hannigan. I wanted to refer to that.
Let's do a quick scan through there.
Can I ask, one question while she's looking up the fund number for the new business? With the implementation, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone who plows. You know, driving these streets when the snow is coming down on a whiteout is not easy to do, and they're plowing to make the street clean and make, trying not to hit a mailbox, and making sure no one's pulling out of their driveway, and, oh, by the way, someone in their street getting their mail out of their mailbox. I mean, there's a lot to it. With the implementation of the nighttime crew, do you have an estimate of how much you saved in overtime?
No, I have to go through that. It's actually, I'm going to end it.
But you would have saved.
Well, we, we did save. We saved money already. But we're going to end it, basically, because it's not having the amount of men I'd like to have. There's too many things that I, I need to do during the day. I'm pulling the men off of that so I can accomplish more during the day.
Unless you're sure of it.
Such as doing, there's a lot of repair work that needs to be done in these buildings. It has to be done.
When does that tour end? Was it 11 weeks? How many weeks?
No, we could have went as long as 10 weeks. But I said at any time, I would, I would end it if I needed to, and I need to, because our roads need to be fixed, and I don't have the help to be out there every day. Plus, with all the other things that have to be done during the day. So, I'm pulling that.
My other question would be regarding roads, and I don't know if this is you or if this is Nick, but have we put together the bid package to do the roads that we didn't do last year because the, by the time the bids were able to be approved to go out, it was higher cost? How are we doing? Because I'd really like to be right there at the first bids.
The bid package is put together. The only reason I hadn't put forth a request for authorization from council to advertise yet. I planned on having it on tonight's agenda. I'm waiting on the geotech to finish up the pavement cores, and with the weather as cold as it's been, they haven't been able to drill those. And the way the program is set up, based on the 15 streets that we have in here and the conditions that, that we've identified, we've got a particular scope of work set up that involves pavement-based recycling, similar to what we've done in the past. And in order to bid that, you need to provide your bidders with existing core, pavement core information. So, I've been working with Jim and our geotech to try and expedite that. You know, if we have to have, if Jim's guys are available, you know, we're going to have to put a salt truck out there to enable these guys to drill and dump water on the road when it's zero degrees. Without that information, we can't bid it. And as we've previously reported to council, beyond being able to recycle that pavement, you need that information. Also, that information may be able to provide insight into ways that we can reduce the scope of work the way we have it set up right now. Because the way it's set up right now, between the 15 streets and what we'd like to do, the sticker price is 2.4 million. So, we're going to have to take the scalpel out and remove some of the streets from that scope if the pavement cores come back and, and confirm the conditions that we suspect. So, to answer your question, I'm waiting on the geotech to get us that information. As soon as we have it, the package is ready to go.
So, we do not have the package out at this point? It's not ready to go? And that's the coring information that you have not received yet? You know, we, of course, we, we had a budget at January 1st, and we have a lot of money riding on getting this all done. Are we anticipating we'll have it done by the next council meeting?
Yes. The pavement cores, we're anticipating to get that done.
And to answer your question, by next council meeting, I'll have your figures for you for money that we saved.
Thank you. That answers the question. Thank you.
Let me just follow up, then. I believe I found the right page here for the...
Was it 1011055, the fund number, something like that?
Yeah, it's 1011105600.
Oh, 5600.
Yes. And you want to do that under new business?
Yeah, we're going to do that.
Okay, then we'll do it.
Jim, I'd like to put something into perspective. When it snows, your men are driving approximately from here to Columbus, 155 lane miles. 155 lane miles, and you do them four, five times in a matter of eight to 10 hours. That's like driving to Columbus, and we drive down there at 70 miles an hour, and it takes two hours. Plus.
Yeah, they average anywhere from, sometimes, depending on the storm, they could be one truck can do 190 to 125 miles. And the driver will be in that truck for 12.
And, and they're split into zones, so that's just within their zone.
Right. Yeah, it's going back and forth.
Amazing. Good job.
Thank you.
Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. We have preliminary talks with Knights Inn. They're talking about putting a new structure in, knocking down the existing structures. That's going to be coming to Planning Commission. We need to see their drawings, work with their architects a little bit more before that comes. Get-go has moved forward, and we received their traffic study this week. As everybody, I don't know if everybody's aware or not, but that'd be, they're going to be taking out the Days Inn, the existing Get-go station, and where the old Denny's and Dos Coronas is now, that's all going to be taken out with the new Get-go station. Redwood Rental Housing Units, they're looking at their first occupancy being April 1st, so we're working with them. We had some meetings in what needs to be done in order for people to move in, and those talks will continue. We want to make sure that we're on the same page with the fire department, and, and fire is happy with the way that the roads are. New businesses last year were 42, and housing, new houses last year were 54. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Mike, I do have a question. Was there a follow-up on, when are you anticipating that the soccer stadium group would be coming back to planning? Do you have a new proposal from them?
No, I don't. I, I didn't receive anything yet. I know that we had talked with them, and they, they talked about making the drawings so that everything complies. There will be no variances.
So, it's unlikely they would be ready for the next Planning Commission, as far as you know, or maybe they will offer something?
They haven't submitted anything yet, so...
Let me ask one other question, on the one next to the, actually, the proposal to put the Marriott, Marisuites, I think, on the property next to the Girl Scouts.
Yes.
What happened with the BZA?
So, the, the variance was, was turned down for the height, the main reason. And I don't think that they want to go any smaller in height. So, we were trying to push them to go into the area.
Where, where we have, before, you mean?
Right.
In the before, okay. Which would be on Highland, around Highland and 8. Okay, thank you.
Nick?
Thank you, Mayor. As I've mentioned, we're just waiting on the core information. The bid package is set up. As soon as we have the cores, I will request authorization to proceed with bids. Depending on the results of those cores, we'll have to come back and present the list of streets based on that information and the current cost estimate. Again, currently, those 15 streets, based on our anticipated scope and the way the documents are set up, it comes up to $2.4 million. So, if we get some favorable information from those pavement cores and we're able to be less conservative with our proposed scope, that'll be great. We can, you know, hopefully, keep all the streets in that program. Otherwise, we'll have to consolidate this list and come back to you and present it prior to advertising it for, for prices from contractors. In addition to that, we are in receipt of the structural retrofit plans for the Ledger Bridge, and we are currently reviewing those documents. That's it.
Thank you.
Nick, I was asking Sylvia to, at some point here, start getting, having a streets and highway meeting soon. I mean, even this winter, there's so many more roads that need to be looked at now. I, I mean, they're, they're done. Some of these roads are completely, they, they're worse than Westwood and all the other ones now. I cannot believe that they went that fast this year. I, I was very shocked.
There's been a lot of damage to roads throughout the area. If you've driven around at all, you know that. What, what I'm asking, Nick, you are going to have a, you're going to have some sort of prioritized list. Is that what you're telling us, or not?
The bid package that I was referring to?
We've have, we've allocated a huge amount of money this year already, and it's not 2.4 million, but it's a lot.
No, correct. I, I believe.
So, I'm just asking you if you've got a prioritized list you're working from.
Yes, I, so we had the list of 15 streets that we requested.
Yeah, well, I understand, but among those 15, have you got?
Among those 15, I mean...
So, we have to...
That, that would be the decision that would have to be made based on the core results would be, right, which streets stay in and which stay out. And my recommendation would, I mean, you could, not to be sarcastic, you could throw a dart at the dartboard. My recommendation would be based on, you know, a cost benefit or a user benefit, if you could identify the streets that have the most traffic.
Well, that's what we're expecting you to do, yes.
Yeah. That's, that will be the list that I present to you.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to bring this up during the new business, but I've been working with Nick all week, talking about Highland Road and the deterioration of it. And at this point, we cannot patch that anymore. The $130,000 estimate is something that this council needs to consider right now. I mean, we cannot continue to patch that road anymore, and if we don't do something now, I mean, we could have a huge liability on our hands. So, I think that roads quickly move to the forefront of one that we need to figure out how we're going to pay for that repair immediately.
That's what I was talking about earlier, Nick. I didn't know if you heard, but I had talked to Summit County Engineer. That is one of the roads, Highland is, that we can use the permissible license tax fees to pay for. We should have a very significant amount of money in there. I spoke to them earlier this week. It's Steve Bruno, as it turns out. And the indication is that we should be able to cover that with some minimal adjustment additions. So, I'm very much in favor of it.
I think the mayor actually sent an email about that earlier in the week, didn't you?
Well...
I think, well, what I'm getting at is, if we're going to put together a bid package, and this council intends to do it, you know, I don't want to run into a situation where we did with Air Lane and Westwood, where we planned to do it, it went into the next year we didn't get it done. This is one where, this is dire. I think we really, if we even have to have a special meeting, I emailed a lot of you a lot about that, but I haven't had a response. So, that's why I'm bringing it up now to say, we need to look into this.
I didn't have any received an email on that topic.
I've not received an email.
But, you're putting that aside. We will indefinitely want to be including that, if we can. What he's telling us right now is that their whole strategy depends on being able to core sample, and apparently, that is not complete, for whatever the reason is. We have, in fact, however, the core sampling indicated that we should have, our original plan on Westwood was, in fact, something that could be modified to a cheaper version because the core indicated they had 11 or 12 inches of asphalt. So, it does indicate we should be getting those data so that we know the right thing to do.
So, should we core Highland Road at this point, or, I mean, to be honest with you, if you go over there and look, you probably don't need to core. You could probably grab a chunk of it, and you figure out what's going on there.
I don't know. We need to get together when we get the...
Nick, when is the best time to have a meeting so we can work on these roads?
As the chief administrator, can you assure them that we get the prioritized list, along with where the funding would come, Mayor, for handling those, and a timeline? I know that's kind of hard to estimate, but if we're going to move Highland up, I, I drove Highland a couple times lately, in Greg's truck, not my car. Thank God.
Highland a couple of times lately in Greg's truck, not my car, thank goodness. But I, I think it's not only the prioritized list, the cost of it, the mayor, where the money would be coming from, and then any potential estimation that you could put. If we start Highland on X, and we all know it's dependent on weather, you know, how long would it take to get a bid out, how long would it take to get the price back, confirm and signature and get this rolling, Mayor? If you could hand that to us before the next meeting, because maybe, before the next meeting, the first thaw will happen.
Nothing like optimism.
I mean, the Highland Road, while we're waiting for cores, the, you know, the bid package is ready, Highland Road could be added to that document pretty easily.
Do you even need cores for Highland Road?
No.
I don't think you do. So, can we begin to put that together? Would the council be in agreement that that's something that we need to prioritize now?
Yes, we don't have to, it's not going to be, what I indicated earlier, it's not going to be in conflict with the money that we've already set aside, because we can get additional funds from that license fee tax.
But that's where I think the mayor would be able to propose, not only, here's the road, here's the cost, here's the fund it's coming from. And if you could put that together, Mayor...
If we're going to do a number of roads together, it does drive your cost down to do them together, so that's why I'm asking council now to put that onto the list immediately.
The email that Nick is talking about went to Nick because we were talking about funding these extra roads, and I sent him that I have been looking for ways to fund it, and we had almost half a million dollars carryover in funds from state funds and license plate funds. Almost a half a million dollars right there. And one of the things that will grow is between now and the time the people will actually be doing the work, we'll probably have another hundred thousand dollars. So, I really feel that this is going to be doable.
Okay. We, you know, as I say, I've already looked at this, at the numbers for Highland, and I'm happy to look at, I've been looking at the financial reports, and I do believe we have flexibility, so, and would have been happy to receive your request to look at that, so, thank you.
Well, the administration will put it all together in one package, that'll help us. Thank you.
All right, Tim?
Mayor, just keep an eye out for any fire hydrants that are covered with the heavy snow, and also keep your house addresses visible from the streets so we can find your house quickly in an emergency. That's all I have.
Good. John?
Well, everybody saw Harrow. I hope they enjoyed the dog. We do accept donations, it is a costly program, so if you, anybody wants to donate, let us know, and we gladly accept your donations. I put something on Facebook the other day, we had twelve crashes in two and a half hours up on the interstate. Jim's out there working, but the salt doesn't work when it's bitterly cold, and I think we're going to get there Friday night, I think. Friday morning, it's going to be really cold, so people just need to slow down, take some more time to get to work, leave a little earlier, and drive safely. I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Again, John, Nixle?
Nixle, yes. I ran into somebody the other day, didn't have Nixle.
Again?
Please, 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 I was telling Mr. Diggatano my travels back over the weekend, and as I was in West Virginia going, okay, I got a four-wheel drive, I can make it, it pinged with the Summit County emergency saying, stay off the road, so made my decision for me. I really think if you don't have that coming onto your phone or your laptop, please find a way to get it, because it alerts you right away. The other one sidebar is Cleveland dot com also alerts you to some that are outside our area, which are really good, today's accident that's over by the airport. I mean, those are things and tools that you can use, you know, when we grew up without all these cell phones, and that just kind of took your chance. Take advantage of the information that's out there.
Yeah, it's, once again, Nixle, N-I-X-L-E dot com. You can go on there, you can sign up through your computer for text alerts, for those folks who don't have cell phones who accept texts. You can get email alerts, or you can pick up your phone, hit your message, your text message, eight-eight-eight, seven-seven-seven, and in the message section, Macedonia zip code, four-four-zero-five-six. It's that easy. Within thirty seconds or so, you'll get a text message saying you signed up for Nixle. If you did this by accident, you can cancel, but it's really easy. We send out, we try to prioritize, we try not to overload the system that it's going off all the time. We just, you know, I think we had four the other day. We had a crash, we had the weather advisory, parking van, I think we had. Yeah, I mean, we can go two, three weeks without any Nixle, and then I think we had four Saturday, I think it was, so it's, it's free. I mean, why can't you, you can't go wrong.
I'd like to also point out that when those eleven, fourteen accidents...
We had twelve in two and a half hour, we had more over the course of the day.
Yeah, but that was the day it was below zero, and some city halls closed, not ours, and our cops were out there doing their job in sub-freezing weather.
Yeah, I posted on Facebook, one of my officers almost got hit on the freeway, so it's on Facebook, little video, I got, I think, twelve thousand hits on that page, it's...
It, it was just a, a job well done, and my compliments go out to them.
Thank you.
Mark?
Sir, what?
Moving on, do we have any unfinished, unfinished business?
One quick question, and maybe I've missed it. Do we have all the reports that we can get the Stormwater Committee back together? You know, the, the sand that we were waiting for, for the creek?
The report for, from solar testing, and I, I've mentioned it to a few people, we're waiting for Medina Supply to give us a letter to permit us to take samples from their facility. As I, I spoke to Mr. Mete Jason and to others, I'm not going to spend five thousand dollars in taxpayer money until I have that letter in my hands that say it's okay to go do that test, or take their material, because without that, the test is useless, nobody will be happy. So, we have to have that letter from them first, and then we'll proceed with the test, and we'll do the full test. But we can't right now.
Do we have an estimated time when they might be able to give us a yes or no?
Well, between Nick and I, we've emailed them and called them, and they haven't been able to give us an answer yet. So, tomorrow, I'll probably do it again and request that, because like I said, as soon as we get that, we'll do the test.
By the way, I just wanted to mention one thing, since Mr. Gaddati is here. I, I have reviewed the legal bills for January and February, and I want you to communicate to Mr. DeMert. I appreciate the adjustments to the billing that you've done, and it is a little more information than we had before, and I know you're attempting to accommodate the format that we had discussed before, so thank you.
Any new business?
Yes.
Well, I want to go back to that, what Sylvia just said. I want a copy of the, I've been asking for the details, so I would like a copy of those when you get them. All right, okay.
Okay, I'm just, I'm going to offer a motion here, transferring ten thousand dollars from General Fund Unencumbered to fund account one oh one, one-one-zero, fifty-six hundred to fund the senior snowplow program.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Any other new business?
Two things, real quick. If, there are a couple teams within the Nordonia High Schools that I think need to be recognized, and the newsletter did a really nice job of recognizing Jared Rydel. He is the first ever to go into the state meet in swimming. Coach Costanza and I, oh, man, it goes back a long time ago with the building of our nadatorium and trying to see if we could use it for the swim team, and what could we do to build a team, and, and Coach Costanza at the time was also the girl soccer coach, but he was willing to take this on, and so I'd like to wish Jared good luck, it starts tomorrow. And then, you don't hear a lot about the bowlers, but I do follow because I bowled a lot in my life, not very good, but. The Nordonia Boys Bowlers win the Summit sectional tournament, and they were the highest, and there also is a sophomore, Hannah, who also had a qualifying for districts. We want to wish them all luck, you know, it's eye-hand coordination when you go to bowl. And so, and then we had some wrestlers, I don't know if they're moving on, but, you know, in the wintertime, we always seem to focus on football, and we need to remember, we had a cross-country team this year, we have swim, someone in swimming, and we have, you know, the wrestlers, and we also have, you know, the bowlers. I'd like to really thank the newsletter, Mr. Leonard and Mr. Deutsch, for, for bringing that and showcasing them. It was very nice to see, thank you, and we wish them all luck.
Janet, thanks for mentioning the bowlers. I, I had them Thursday and Friday with the no school. They're friends with my son Luke, and they eat you out of house and home, I got news for you. I mean, I believe how bad it is. Those are big kids, but it's funny, because I was a bowler, and my ex-husband was a bowler, and Luke has never picked up a bowling ball, and these kids have been trying to get him to bowl with them. But I think Luke would be a very good bowler, but, besides that, but, yeah, these kids are, I've had a lot of fun with them, and they were in my car arguing about whose averages was what over the week, so, thanks for mentioning them, though.
You're welcome.
Any other new business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roke Call Josephine?
Sure. Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannigan?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?